Evening and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 7th, 2010. Roll call.
Mayor Heiki.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken. Beggarly.
Here.
DeBlee.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the council meeting. We have a couple of scheduled public hearings. We also have an announcement from our local Yellow Ribbon Committee and the regular pieces of the agenda. At this time, I'll ask the council if they have any additions or deletions to the agenda. All right, I will add a couple of things under miscellaneous. One is a proclamation on behalf of the Kiwanis Club for their annual Peanut Day. It's a fundraiser. Secondly, an announcement from the League of Minnesota Cities about their regional meetings this fall. And thirdly, I'd like to comment on the Aviation Day that was held at our airport on this weekend. If there's no other comments, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ammon. Councilmember Ammon.
Can I briefly discuss under miscellaneous on the letter we received from the FAA at the airport?
Okay, would that come up anywhere else on the agenda? Is that under a committee meeting or anything?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right, the letter from FAA, that'd be under miscellaneous. Now to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and it's been seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We're now down to number seven, which is the scheduled public hearings. And I will open the first public hearing, which has to do with assessments for properties or businesses that are not mowing the grass in a timely manner. Kevin, can you explain this, please?
Mayor Heiki, members of the council, you have before you a list of properties and dollar amounts that was incurred by the city or its agents in mowing these properties between August 1st in 2009 and July 31st, 2010. Pursuant to our charter, it is recommended that we have hearings on these properties and the property owners may enter their testimony. And upon hearing that, the council should take action to adopt a resolution certifying dollar amounts as listed here, subject to any testimony to the contrary.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address any of these items on the assessments for unpaid weed and grass mowing? If not, the public hearing on this matter is now closed. The matter comes up to the city council table. Councilmember Anderson?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and it's been seconded to approve this special assessment. Comments about this? I had one question, Kevin. There's one property here listed five times. Is that five different occasions?
Certainly.
Abandoned for the whole summer.
Five times. Do you know if this is a local property owner or anything? I mean, that's an expensive assessment that they don't take heed of that.
When we do proper notification and certified mailings to the owner of record.
And no response.
Shows to abandon it.
Okay. It's $118 for every occurrence and there's five of them on the same property. All right, any other comment? This is a roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I'll now open the second public hearing, which has to do with an assessment for unpaid snow and ice removal from last winter. Kevin, would you explain that?
Mayor Heiki, members of the council, you have before you a list of just two properties that failed to take action upon receiving notice to clean their sidewalks. The sidewalks were cleared by the city or its agent. And tonight you take testimony from these property owners. Barring any testimony, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution certifying those amounts as listed for special assessments collected in 2011.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any comment or questions from any member of the audience about this? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. And again, the matter comes up to the city council table. Councilmember Reese.
I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and it's been seconded to introduce this resolution to certify for the amount of unpaid snow and ice removal charges to the county auditor. Any further comment about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We are now down to the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the council about some matters going on in the city? Mr. Sullivan, come forward, please. Good evening, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Sullivan, 508 Southeast 13th Street, Wilmer. Move to the council. You're going to be hearing something in your finance report later, and it's just for information only. But I would like to make it the citizens of Wilmer more aware of it. And I'm going to read you a short item here. It says, "Should the city of Wilmer finance the completion and expansion of the airport, industrial park, hiking and biking trails, connection of the Blue Line and Civic Center buildings, and purchase of that portion of the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center campus west of Highway 71, approximately 60 acres, with a one-half percent sales tax on all taxable transactions occurring within the cities of Wilmer? The projects have an estimated cost of $8 million. The sales tax will expire upon payment of a bonded indebtedness issued to finance the various projects anticipated to be seven years from the date of implementation." That's what we voted on back on November 4th, 2004. That was the ballot question. Recently, it had been brought to the Finance Committee's attention, my attention. I asked for some information. The city has collected as of June 30th, 2010, find my number here, $7,758,351.68. I'm assuming that since June 30th, we passed the $8 million mark. We have spent in that about $5,400,000 on the industrial park airport, which still hadn't been turned over to the city. We have spent $415,847.85 plus on hiking trails and bike trails, and that includes the two parking lots over on Fronson Field, which I don't see a lot of people hiking on those. We spent $1,071,000 on attaching the Civic Center with the Blue Line building. And nothing on the land because that can be given to the state, by the state. On the website, the city has projected a $7 million cost for the airport industrial park redevelopment, $400,000 for hiking and biking trails, we're already over that. The partial we're not going to buy, that was for $300,000. They gave that to the Civic Center, which is, that was a good deal. That's a nice little center out there. And then another $300,000 to the Civic Center Blue Line area. So that would be $600,000 for the Civic Center, and we've already spent over a million. So I guess what I'm asking is that think this tax needs to be retired because it doesn't say anything in what we voted on in 2004, that it can run for seven years, irregardless of the amount collected, and collect another three and a half million dollars over 2011, 2012. I think the citizens deserve a little more respect in that. And the tax can be quit by an ordinance of the city on the last day of a quarter, which could be the end of September or the end of December. If you want to carry it that far, you would collect for this year. It also specifies in the, from the state, that any extra monies, not unless that's your intention, can go into the general fund. If that's your intention, I don't think it's fair. Because the general fund, everybody from out of town is helping pay this tax. It goes into the general fund, they're not getting any benefit from it. So I just would like to draw that to your attention. I think it needs to be stopped when it reaches $8 million because the overage could have been spent to pay down the bonds. You have no bonds. You elected as a council to pay as you go. So you don't owe anybody anything. And the issues are there. I think the citizens should be aware of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John. Anybody else that wishes to address the city council? All right, we will then move on. Number nine on the agenda. Tonight, we have a couple of guests with us in the council chambers. They are Kami Nelson and Conrad Bostrom, who are here representing the Yellow Ribbon Committee and the work of the committee, I should say, for the city of Wilmer and for our military men and women. And they'd like to address the council with some very, very good news. Kami and Conrad, please welcome and tell us what's on your mind.
Well, it was about a year ago, I stood up here with my knees shaking and trembling voice to tell you that I was going to pursue getting Wilmer recognized as a Yellow Ribbon Community. And I received the notification that we attained that last week. And before you, I have the action plan that we submitted that explains, that is actually the application to become a Yellow Ribbon City. In the year since the last time I was here, we went throughout the community, we had the training event, we pulled people in from the various sectors of our community and put together this action plan. I feel like we've got an awesome team right now. And we're going down, there's a news release also there showing Wednesday, September 22nd, we're going to Farmington where we will receive our certification from the governor. There are also 12 other cities, two counties, and seven companies that will be recognized at the same time. So that will bring our, the total in the state of Minnesota will be 17 Yellow Ribbon Cities, which we are one. Are there any questions?
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Kami?
Just comment.
Go ahead, Steve.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You took some time and you stayed dedicated to your goal and you've accomplished that.
Thank you.
And I hope we can help you fulfill the action plan, city's cooperation in any way we can.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work. I know you put in a lot of time in this. How can we publicize this, or how do you plan to publicize this that the Wilmer does have that designation? Maybe it's in your action plan and I didn't see that, but the word needs to get out.
Yeah, we, we've sent out news releases to the media. We have, I'm trying to think, we're probably going to be interviewed by Bevalquist at, is it KD?
KDQ, yes.
Yes. I was interviewed by Paul Stig at KWLM, which will be aired yet this week, I believe. So we're working, you know, we're trying to get this word out. One thing that comes with the designation is two signs that will be placed to the entrances of our city. So.
And I'm sure there must be some public information coming out of the Veterans Office here in Candyote County? Won't they be talking about it and telling people about it?
Yeah, you know, it's what we make of it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I really hope that we'll get some talk going because the benefit is to our veterans and our families that are serving with loved ones overseas. And we really want them to know that we are behind them, that Wilmer supports them, even if they're not from Wilmer, we support the whole area in the veterans and deployed service members.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kami and Conrad, thank you for your leadership. You are truly amazing individuals. I'm sure it's not because you both have sons that are in the military that drives you to do this, but I would imagine that you're inspired by their patriotism. I'd like for you to talk a little bit about what Homefront Connection has done over the last number of months.
Okay. I'm going to have Conrad address that.
Thank you, Conrad Bostrom, Spicer, Minnesota. It's a privilege again to be in front of you and to bring this good news and really recognizing that for the city is also for the community as a whole, because we do represent a great and large geographic area. We initially started with our training session about a year ago, an organization and election of officers. And then from that point, we've opened up all of our resources. We've helped several veterans, we've helped some wives of deployed soldiers. We've been involved in everything from fundraising to babysitting to painting and to light home construction recently. And we're really not too bad at it. It pays to have a connection with a construction company nearby. But it's the end, our resource, our primary resources are word of mouth, the veterans organizations, and the family readiness units for both the reserve and the guard. And that's where we virtually have been able to meet every need that's been presented to us in one way or another, or get them to the resource that could help them.
Well, you truly do complement the American Legion, the DAB, and the VFW in town. As a past commander of the Legion and the DAB, I personally thank both of you and your entire group for all of the things that you've done for our community. It's really very inspiring. I mean, we do our things as federal organizations, the Legion and the DAB and the VFW. But it's also nice to have another organization because there's a lot of heavy lifting that goes on and we can't do it all in our organization. So again, thanks for what you have done and what you're going to continue to do.
Well, we appreciate that. And I think our group is very reflective of our armed service people. You know, we're fighting a worldwide war on terror and defending our nation and its separate and individual needs with an all-volunteer force. And we're also doing this as an all-volunteer organization without any outside funding and any sponsorship besides our own fundraising. So I think we're very reflective of the people that we serve. And we would be amiss certainly if we didn't invite the officials of the city of Wilmer to join us on this occasion on September 22nd in Farmington. We would very much like to have as many of you as possible be present. And we originally thought we would have three people receiving from our group, but they've allowed us to have four, kind of the four primary spokesmen for our groups. We're very excited about that. And we will be there and you are very welcome to join us. We would appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
I have a question, Conrad. Now that we are becoming a Yellow Ribbon Community, does that put more demands on your committee, on our community? Does this, you know, step forward into some other things that you haven't?
I think it'll bring our group and what we do more into the light, which will naturally bring more opportunity. Yeah, I'd really, I'd look at it totally as opportunities. I know for Kami and I and really for our entire group, we'd be very satisfied without receiving this, just getting the satisfaction we have from the people we've helped. So give us a challenge, bring us some more. We have more we can do yet and we're looking forward to that.
Councilmember Reese and Ammon?
I just have a question. The last page of your action plan says, "High-demand services employers can provide." I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Have you got a lot of companies that have said, "We'll help out in this"?
Yes, we have.
And how do you advertise that, Conrad, so that companies know that?
Probably one of our key, just, and it all ties to about a year ago, the founding part of this organization had a booth at Prairie Pothole Days and actually solicited some interest and see what people, that's actually my first initial. Knew Kami and from community Christian school activities and knew that she's very supportive of the military and that was kind of my initiation. Boy, I better sign up, I better get involved. And that's how I got started. We also have solicitation from our website, which we're in the process of updating. So a person could get on and could actually research Homefront Connection Military Family. That's our ultimate goal, could bring resources for military families and be able to pull up ours and also see a list of these providers, the specific providers. And our goal is to ultimately have a sticker in their window that says Military Friendly Business, Home Yellow Ribbon, and identify that. So a person will come in and they'll say, "Oh, this is Midas Auto Service," or "This is Central Tire." They're military friendly, and they'll come in.
So if there's a business in town, a businessman that's watching right now, can they call you?
Absolutely. Got both our contact numbers on the proclamation, Kami's in mine, and that would be the best way to get started.
Can we give it over the air so that if they're watching?
Be good with me? Yeah, I can be reached at 796-6545. You'll most likely speak with my lovely wife and she'll get the message to me. And Kami can be reached at 651-331-8465.
Thank you. There's a lot of people that watch and I just thought.
Great, great. I hope I look good. All right. Kami always looks good. You know that.
Councilmember Ammon?
Yeah. And we really do, we really do need volunteers. We have a major effort going on for the wife of a reservist in town. And this is an example where we don't need help because a group from Rice Hospital, which is giving their full support, the employees of Rice, is going to come and help us with some light construction on a day that we pick out. But there's ongoing projects that, and we always need volunteers. And if you have a passion, Mayor Heiki, the patriotism, you really hit on that. That's really the key. There's two things in this world that I love more than our country, and the people that give us this freedom to have this country to love are our servicemen and women. And anything we can do, I can't do enough personally. I don't think any of us can to show our appreciation. So anyway, thank you.
Just hold on. Councilmember Ammon?
Well, I have one question, one concern. Obviously, after this war, there's a lot of people that are coming back, veterans are coming back. And as far as job placement, do you have any feel for that? Is that part of your plan as far as placing people in a job? It's probably the most important thing right now and I'm wondering, is that going to be your involvement?
Our direct tie with the local Veterans Administration, I think, is our best key right there. And with the family readiness units for both reserve and guard. And full-time active duty is different because they'll typically have a different game plan. They have a process for going out and you have an educational plan afterwards or a work plan, so it's quite a bit different. And unfortunately, some of the guard and reserve members have come back to jobs that don't exist any longer. And I think the first resource is getting them through the veterans, local Veterans Administration and Veterans Affairs Office, and we have a tie to that. We have a committee member that's directly involved with that. And then we can do our part. And through this network of businesses, I think we've got a really good resource.
Thank you for explaining that.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's fair to also mention that Tricia Appeldorn, our county veteran service officer, has played a big role in this.
Huge role.
Yes, and there are 23 and a half million veterans that live in the United States and 402,000 live in Minnesota. So we have 8% of the state population that are veterans. And if you say half have wives, I'm sure that many, and children and grandchildren, you really do touch a lot of people. And with so much of the war action to date having been done by the reserve units, we have a reserve unit in town, we have a guard unit in town, that they have, I mean, it's a seamless organization with the guard and reserve and the active duty. And so again, this is a big deal.
Absolutely. Yeah, Trish has been an absolute vital resource to us and she has a passion. She's a veteran herself. She has a passion for the veteran and for their family. I believe there's still somewhere in the neighborhood of 53 units, Minnesota Guard and Reserve in some fashion, in an active duty status right now. And a lot of the maintenance work, the security work that's being done in Iraq particularly is being done by guard and reserve units. A member of our committee is a naval reservist and she will just be getting a 12-month commitment over in Kuwait. So, anything else?
Anyone else? Thank you, Conrad and Kami, for coming in. And I will check my scheduling, you know, tonight to see if I can join you on that. I'll let you know tomorrow. All right, thanks for coming in. Next on the agenda is the Finance Committee Report for August 30th. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda has to do with the local option sales tax. Finance Director Okens reviewed historical data on the local option sales tax program through June 30th, 2010, as well as projections that are in the 2011 budget. The city of Wilmer began receiving the tax as of January 1st, 2006, and first stage statute is to terminate after seven years or when sufficient funds have been received to finance up to $8 million in bonds. The authorized improvements include completion and expansion of the airport industrial park, hiking and biking trails, connection of the Blue Line and Civic Center buildings, and purchase of that portion of the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center campus that's located west of Highway 71. Proposed projects remaining that could utilize sales tax funds included partial funding for the Western Collector that's in the industrial park, finishing Wilmer Avenue, plating and other services for the industrial park, and cost to finalize the old and new airports. This matter was for information only, but I think the committee wanted to have some further discussion on it tonight. There was considerable discussion at our meeting as to where we were with, excuse me, with the $8 million since we had elected to pay as you go. And I think that there was no necessarily consensus from the committee, but I think there was some concern as to where we were and what we needed to do next. So I would open it up to discussion if I might, Mr. Mayor. And I know some of the council members, some were there, weren't able to speak, and maybe we can hear from them and maybe get some thoughts, additional thoughts on this.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember DeBlee?
Yeah, I think, you know, we haven't finalized the old and new airports and this was a major part of the financing for the, for our industrial park, which is actually usage of the old airport. I think until we finalize those projects, we should continue with the sales tax and collect the revenue from it. We have not gotten firm cost estimates on our industrial park and what it's going to take to actually go in and do that work.
Councilmember Reese?
As Mr. Sullivan read to us earlier, and looking at the minutes, there's, to me, there seems to be a little bit of difference from what was on the ballot as to what I read here. And here it says, "When sufficient funds have been received to finance up to $8 million in bonds," and what Mr. Sullivan read to us, and I don't have the exact words in front of me, but it was the estimated, a of me, but it was the estimated amount of $8 million in bonded indebtedness. Is that, is that, I mean, what, what, what is it? It's, here it says, "Finance up to," and what he read to us, it said, "Estimated $8 million some dollars."
Mick, do you want to comment, or? I can read what it says here in the legislation. It says that the city of Wilmer may issue without an additional election, general obligation bonds of the city in the amount not to exceed $8 million to pay capital and administrative expenses for the acquisition, construction, improvement, and development of the projects listed. The debt represented by the bonds must not be included in commuting debt limitations applicable to the city and the levy of taxes required by Minnesota statutes. To pay the principal or any interest on the bonds must not be subject to any levy limitations to be included in commuting or applying the levy limitation applicable to the city. That's the language of the legislation. As I understand it, it says that the city can expend up to $8 million, and they can do it through bonding issues on projects. They can do it by cash, or, or as money is accumulated, or whatever. I, I, you know, we still have quite a lot of work to do at the industrial site where the old airport is. And whether we pay cash or bond for it, if we bond for it, I would say we can pay for that bond through the collection of the local option sales tax. Now, I don't know, Rich, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this at all, or if you just want to hold back for now, but you are welcome to weigh in if you want to.
Are there bonds?
As of today, I don't think so.
No.
I want to stay in there, Bill, and not just part of the red.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmembers, Councilmember Anderson, then Amon.
Thank you. I, I think that's very appropriate, that we have the city attorney look at it. Because there is some, I think, some genuine confusion, and maybe he can tell us what our, what our options might be. If we opt to do some bonding, you know, then that, that might change the complexion of things. But I think it's a very good idea that, that we have the city attorney look at it.
Councilmember Amon.
Well, that's one reason why I brought up, or was going to bring up miscellaneous letters. We received them FAA, to see if that, those expenses we may incur on the improvements needed on the, the RCO relocation and the issues at the old site, if that is going to be, could be used, if those funds could be used, since it is part of the relocation. And that was part of the stipulation in the half percent sales tax for the money to be used for that, if that is allowable use. Of course, I'm concerned also about the budget. If those expenses that we might have to incur on maintaining that building and changing that is going to have an effect on, in which department, you know, the, our annual budget or through the half percent sales tax. And that's what I was going to bring up. But since we're on the subject, I, I agree with the issue of the half percent sales tax ending at a limitation time and not exceeding it. I think people are probably anxious to have that over, too. But I, I don't want to cut ourselves short if there's other expenditures that we're, we're going to incur. And I guess my question, Mick, is, since we're on the subject, do you know, after we received the letter from the FAA, have you received any estimates from anybody on, on what these approximate costs might be at the airport at this time, or one we might expect them?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, we have not. We, we have somebody putting together estimates.
Okay.
As we speak, and, and we should have them very shortly. So, we'll have a pretty good idea of what it might cost for a, a, a number of different activities out there. In my opinion, yes, these funds could be used for that. I mean, it's resolving the issues of the old terminal building and surrounding areas are obviously all part of redevelopment of the old airport site and converting it into an industrial park, whether it's used in its current state as storage or some other purpose down the road. I personally think that the legislation is quite clear. I, I've never been confused by the ballot question or the legislation. The legislation clearly states that the city may issue general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $8 million. We've chosen not to issue general obligation bonds. I think it's a moot question. We've chosen to finance our activities and pay cash as we go. And the seven-year limitation would apply. And I think that staff, in its explanation of our interpretation of the local option sales tax, indicated that would be in 2012. Now, we also stated that the city council can end the local option sales tax anytime it wants. But we were trying to point out in providing all this information about what the money's been spent on and what remains to be done was to give the council an idea of how much money would be needed. There's not enough money there today to complete what we're talking about with the old airport site. And we also pointed out that you would likely stop redevelopment of the old airport site at the new County Road 5, which represents the western border of Phase 1 of a three-phase program that we established to redevelop and expand the industrial park. Phase 2 moves it a little further to the west. Phase 3, all the way out to the existing old, boundaries of the existing old airport site. We have to be careful about the $8 million. And I think that there's language in the ballot question. I wasn't paying attention when you, when it was being read. But I believe the word "estimated" is included in the ballot question. All of those projects in 2004 were developed based on estimated costs. Here we are in 2010. We estimated we would spend X number of dollars for bike paths, and we spend X number of dollars plus. Were we that far from the estimate? I don't know. I'll let others be the judge of that. Clearly, they were estimated. The only specific language anywhere that deals with the $8 million is in the legislative authorization, which states very clearly, "The city in an amount not to exceed $8 million to pay capital and administrative expenses." Had we issued $8 million worth of bonds in 2005, following the legislation, and started paying on that principle in 2006, we would have ended up paying over the course of servicing that bond issue in the neighborhood of $12 million. Again, I'll let the people be the judge. Was it a wise decision to pay cash for these projects? Or should we have taken advantage of the authorization in the legislation and incurred $12 million in debt? To me, it isn't even an issue.
Well, then, I think that, that's, that's the issue. That's what we wrestled with at the committee meeting. So, I think it's, I hear exactly what, what Mr. Schmidt is saying. And I think we'll just wait to get something back from the city attorney, and then we'll take it up at a finance committee meeting when we get that. So, this was for information.
Go ahead.
I think we have another comment.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you give me a little better idea of, Dennis, what you mean by what the city attorney is going to bring back to us? What are we expecting, or what are we asking him to bring back to us?
His interpretation of the law and where we stand, having collected something over $7.5 million.
And, and how do we deal with the word "estimated $8 million"?
I'm not the attorney, so I'm, I'm going to.
I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be addressed. What does an estimated $8 million mean?
Okay. The, the second item on our agenda had to do with the 2011 mayor's proposed budget. Finance Director Okens reviewed with us the functions of the various city funds, noting usage restrictions when they were applicable. Staff also provided information on the method used to determine the levy limit base, which is a combined total of local government aid and property tax authority. The mayor's proposed tax levy for 2011 is $3,924,764, and includes $100,000 that's been earmarked by the mayor for stormwater projects, as was done in 2010. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution setting the preliminary levy at $3,924,764, and to schedule December 6th, 2010, to conduct the public hearing on this levy with a continuation date of December 20th, 2010, if needed.
I'm sorry. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to introduce this resolution about the preliminary levy. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, the members of the council, the resolution we have in hand includes a preliminary levy as well for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I'm sorry that that didn't get brought up at, at the Finance Committee meeting. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority's levy is, I believe, the same amount as it was last year, but like we are required to do in each year. And incidentally, that's $170,000. What we're required to do each year when we adopt the resolutions for the preliminary levy and the final resolution in December is we need to include the levy of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, which, like the city's levy, can be reduced but not increased at a later date.
Councilmember Anderson.
And Mr. Schmidt just hit on the thing that we did focus on. This is preliminary. It can go down, but it cannot go up. This may not be the levy that is enacted at the end of the year. So, the committee thought it was prudent to, to go with this number at this point.
Okay. We have a motion, and it's been seconded for this resolution. Further discussion.
Councilmember Reese.
Just have some questions. I guess I'll have to address it to you, Mick, because Mr. Okens isn't here. But I was just trying to get a handle, as, as I was looking at this, on how Wilmer compares. And I know the mayor has, in his budget comparisons, but I, I took the, the attached information that showed the different cities and their levies and made some comparisons. And I don't know if it's, if it's a, a good way of comparing or not. I took cities that are the same, or the same size, but close to the same size as Wilmer. And then, just for a factor, I divided their levy by their population. Is that a fair way of assessing, of looking at it? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do this all the time as well. I try to pick out cities that are similar sized in populations, just to see how we, we compare in terms of the levy. The, the answer to your question is no, that's not a fair comparison, because every community is just a little bit different. They have different priorities. They have different ways of funding various activities, and you're never comparing apples to apples. A good example of that is, I asked the police chief, and I asked our acting Public Works Director, to put together a similar analysis for police departments and public works departments. How many public works employees do these cities have? How many miles of streets do they maintain? How many parks does each community have? And how many employees does it take to maintain them? And the same with the police department. What are your crime statistics? How many miles of streets do you patrol every year? And we tried to make some comparisons. It's impossible. Even though the community sizes are similar, they have different ways of doing business. They have different priorities. They have different revenue sources. They appropriate and allocate dollars differently. We can look at a community similar to our size, and we can determine how many police officers they have and make a comparison, but it doesn't really mean much. How many of them are, are at the management level? How many are detectives? How many are assigned to the DARE program, or any number of other special assignments we have? Do their officers work with area drug task forces? They're not the same. So, I would caution you. I think it's, it's good information, and it kind of gives you a broad picture, but I would caution against using it to make judgments about our own organization.
I would like to add two examples. One is, this city is now embarking on the cost of starting to pay back our new wastewater treatment plant. And, you know, this is a $80 billion project, $85 million project, and we have to start paying that back. That's built into our general budget by the rate increases, and so it kicks up our budget higher this year than it did last year. Another example would be, if I can speak about the city of Austin, Minnesota. Austin is roughly the same size population of Wilmer, about 19,000 people, but they reside inside of Moore County. And so does Hormel. And Hormel has a very healthy foundation that's been in place for many, many years, probably decades. And that foundation funds many projects within Moore County and within the city of Austin. We don't have anything like that here. You know, they may get, you know, $300,000 to add to something in public safety, or something in diversity. We don't have any options, we don't have any similar kind of funding mechanisms. So, those are just two examples of how cities can be, or at least how we can be similar in size, but have different funding streams to run the operations of the city. And that affects the size of the budget, the number of employees, and everything else. Another factor that, our lakes, the city of Worthington, I think, has a population of about 12,000 people, maybe 13,000 people. They've got beautiful lakes down there that increase their mileage of streets, increase their cruising time. You know, we've got lakes here, too, and ours are fairly big, but theirs are bigger. And yet, they're probably only 2/3 the size of our town, so their cost on their vehicles is higher within their police department, I believe. That's what was explained to me by the mayor down there one time. So, every city really varies in how it, it puts together its services, how they're funded, and the costs, and the size of their budget. Okay. Anything else here before we move on? This is a motion. This is a motion is on the floor for this resolution.
I had a question, Mick. What about the preliminary levy for the Economic Development Center? Isn't that part of what we have to approve here?
Mr. Mayor, the Economic Development Commission is funded through the county's operating budget.
We don't have to approve anything?
No.
And the same...
Well, we haven't, in establishing the EDC, we required that the EDC present its budget to the city council for approval, but we don't have anything to do with the levy.
And what about Mid-Minnesota Development Commission? Do we have to approve anything from them?
No.
On their levy?
No.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the vote now is to approve the preliminary levy. Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. That resolution passes.
The next item on our agenda had to do with electronic transmission of agendas. We discussed the possibility of having all of the agenda packets sent out electronically instead of being mailed to us through the mail. It seemed that this would save on administrative costs, mailing and all that sort of thing. However, there would be the expense of laptops or whatever we opted to use, that would have to be purchased for those council members that didn't have one. And it was pointed out that sometimes reading information on paper is preferred over looking at it on a computer screen. We took that for information only, and I would say that the committee was lukewarm at best, so I think that it will probably not be followed up on unless there's strong sentiment from the rest of the council that weren't at that meeting. I think...
I don't see any comment.
That was just an idea that I don't think is going to possibly fly. The next item was funding the Garfield School study. The committee discussed optional uses of Garfield School should the city take ownership. First one would be that the city could simply own the building. Second, demolish the building and have a two-block city park. Or, number three, remodel it into an office building with council chambers. Staff was directed to do some research on architectural services, and I believe they've done that. Mick, do you want to explain what we have?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had an opportunity to once again visit with Richard Inge and Associates regarding some sort of a feasibility study. Mr. Inge did put together a proposal for the council to consider whereby, in order to arrive at some conclusions, we needed to, for the purposes of a feasibility study, establish a proposed use. So we just selected office building. Nothing more than a general statement, office building. And he would break this feasibility study down into a number of categories and actually take a hard look at the building, the substructure, the roofing, the interiors, elevators, which we know they don't have, fire protection, plumbing, heating, ventilating, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And would provide the city council with a report. The outcome of this project would be submitting to the council a building condition report with a narrative description of each of those work items that I previously mentioned. And Mr. Inge felt that he could do the study for $3,000. Not included in the study is a reused study of specific functions and specific uses for the building, nor does it include preparing plans of existing conditions or proposed renovation. And I think that's what the committee was looking for, just some general ideas about if we were, in fact, to take control of this property, what could we expect in terms of costs associated with renovating that building, bringing it up to some type of, in this case, office use? Maybe there are other uses that we have not, at this point, considered.
I think if the council is interested in that property at all, I think this would be a very wise and prudent step. It turns out it was much less than what I had anticipated that the cost might be, and Mick was closer to the correct number than I was. That said, I would move that we adopt Mr. Inge's proposal in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, to adopt an agreement between the city and Inge and Associates for this preliminary study of Garfield School. Comment? Councilmember Amen?
Question. Mick, has the school district, in the years of owning that facility, performed any studies as to their future use or the cost of approving that facility, bringing up the codes? Have they had any information that we might already have that might enlighten us on the condition of that existing structure?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, yes, Mr. Amen. We did have quite a bit of information regarding the condition of the building. The school district, not too long ago, did an assessment of all of its building in terms of maintenance needs and issues, and established some estimated costs of improvements in a capital program over a five-year period. So we were able to use a lot of that information. I think that is reflected in the work that Inge is doing. He doesn't have to do a lot of that background work. So there is information out there.
I thought the numbers were surprisingly low. That must be the reason for it. There must be a lot of information that we already have. And the other thing is, it's $3,000. That might be a small amount or a large amount, depending on who you talk to. You know, the concept of this whole thing, we've talked about it, as far as our future needs, now things have changed slightly. We're meeting negotiations with the county on the assessing department, which is going to free up more space, I would assume, if that area is going to be used by our city staff and the structure. And I just don't want to spend $3,000, spend $3,000, but I guess the question is, do we want to move from downtown? You know, do we want to spend $3,000? These are pretty philosophical questions. We have to start somewhere, but if the council's decision is, or thoughts right now, is that we shouldn't be moving there, or that we're fine, or we're going to get by with what we have, why even go ahead? And I know this has been talked about, and it's a small number, and we have to start someplace. I'm just expressing some concerns as to the perception of the public, you know, is if we later would say, well, we don't want the building anyway. And I guess I don't know that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the issue is actually pretty simple. The school had approached the city and inquired as to our interest in the Garfield property. They're trying to dispose of two of the three, Washington, Garfield, and Lincoln. They can't afford to have those three buildings sitting empty. I suspect if the city isn't interested, then they'll pursue other avenues and possibilities. But in order for us to answer the question, it would be real easy if we were talking about two blocks of vacant land, parkland. A no-brainer, but there's a building there, so what do we do with the building? I brought up the idea of possible use for a city office building. That was my idea. And in my discussions with Mr. Inge, and I made it very clear to him that he was not to view this in the context of a city office building, because up to this point, I have not received those vibes that there's a lot of enthusiasm for that kind of a project. So what do we do with the building? You know, I think this will give us an idea if there are other possible uses or not. And I agree with Mr. Anderson. It's, you know, it's a reasonable amount of money to arrive at that determination. And then we'll be able to answer the school's question.
Thank you for explaining that.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, is there a deadline or a timeline for us to get back to the school on this? I know they want to get rid of one or two of them soon, but is it not on their schedule to be used this coming, or is it being used now?
Yes.
And it's for...
Area Learning Center.
Learning Center?
It's the Area Learning Center?
ALC.
ALC is still located there. If at some point in the future the city took over the property, the school would consider moving that activity to Lincoln.
Okay, from what I understand, in those reports and when we toured the building, Mr. Olson told me that the cost per square foot of maintaining that building is the least expensive of all the buildings the school owns. And part of that is because there is no air conditioning, of course, but the heating system works well in there, and it's somewhat efficient. Your first option here, simply owning the building, is it in our best interest, too? I know that we sure could use owning that, half of that two-block area, which is the park area. With finances and the economy being the way it is, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what's best for the city. We aren't getting this free, first of all. Am I correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And the amount would be equal to the amount of the road being put in over by Roosevelt? Is that...
Or some portion of it.
Or some portion of it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
I think, and I hear all the discussion, and I agree, the other thing I want to point out is I think we need to think forward 10, 15, 20 years. Might that be a good investment that the city owns that property and has that within our control? I know it's not right exactly in the center of our community, but it seems like green space is always at a premium, and I think we should consider it as we look to the future as something that we may be thankful that we have on down the road. I don't know if the building should remain or not. That's a question to be decided.
Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard for me to understand how leaving the building stand, I tend to agree with Dennis, that green space is a premium in downtown. But, you know, it's functioned as a school, and many school buses bring many children into that school, and I'm sure they've had 30 or 40 teachers and staff that worked there. And parking would be a real concern for me. If there were going to be a continuing public use for that building, where would you park the vehicles? I'm not sure it's a wise investment at this time, quite frankly.
Mr. Mayor?
I agree with you, Mr. Dockin, as far as if so, an investment or not, but I'm more curious than anything else. I'm foolish not to at this point in time to spend that $3,000. If, I'm assuming, then that $3,000 estimated cost, that we're going to get some cost or estimate of what it would cost to demolish that building also, if we use it for green space, and that's included?
I asked him to do that.
You asked him to do that? We have to look at the big picture, and the only thing I'm really curious about, several years ago, we gave the land out at the new Wilmer High School, it's the school district, I believe, for $1. Ole Reynolds gave the dollar to the superintendent of schools, I believe, at that time. And I know there was discussion on, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours when the time comes, and maybe this is our time. I don't know. But things have changed through several years with the school district, too, as we're all hearing in the paper on their budgeting process also. I just hope that, I'm more curious as to what the cost would be, more than anything else.
Mr. Amen is right. There was a lot of horse trading, and in the original agreement, when we deeded the property to the high school, we had a provision that stated, in the event the school discontinues use of Garfield or the WAC building, those properties would be turned over to the city of Wilmer for a dollar. Well, then, a number of years later, the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center project came along. We were looking for a site and approached the school for that, I believe, seven acres out there, and they agreed to give us the property to construct the aquatic center, but wanted the provision for Garfield removed from that original agreement.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would add a couple of comments, and that is that the neighborhood in that part of the city is very proud of that, of those grounds. They value that park very strongly. They see it as a stabilizing force of that part of the city. The other thing is the strong interest in this community for historic preservation. And I think if one of the options is to demolish the building and retain the land, you know, that's going to need some very thorough kind of explanation, because there will be many citizens, I think, who will not want to see that building demolished. I think we do need this preliminary look at the building from Mr. Inge, and I think he will give us some good ideas, some rough costs, and some good options. We said the same thing about the land west of town that the new wastewater treatment plant is on. Why should we buy that back in the early '90s? Well, it was one of the very few pieces of land available near the city, and so the council voted at that time to purchase the land without any specific use for it except for future use. And other than the trap chute, which moved out there from its previous site, it was unused for many years. It became the brush site, but look what it's become now after 20 years. But had not the council had the vision and the forward thinking of purchasing the land for future use, where would we be without our wastewater treatment plant location today? Probably on the airport property or somewhere else, but it was seen as a good decision at that time. I think we should study this, and we've been in good partnership with the school district on many ideas. I think this is another idea that we should explore and see what we learn from it. Anything else, Dennis? On this issue?
We just have a motion on the table.
To pay for the $3,000 estimated cost. All right. Any other comment?
We need to turn this into a resolution, Mayor. It'll be a contract with Inge, and authorize the mayor and city administrator enter into that contract.
All right. That's understood as part of the motion?
Yes.
Roll call?
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Final item on our agenda is just a clerical matter, and that's that we have decided that we will allow citizen input as the first, on the budget. Citizen input on the budget will be the first item on our agenda for the Finance Committee until the 2011 budget is finalized. So unless there's questions, I have moved to file these minutes.
Second.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, to file the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Next are the Labor Relations Committee report for August 31st. Councilmember Amen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Labor Relations Committee met on August 31st. Item number one on the agenda is, staff presented to the committee the results of the pilot program consolidated and reorganizing the building maintenance positions, assignments, and job duties. The city continues to employ three building maintenance personnel. One additional position has remained vacated, has been vacated following a recent retirement, and one other part-time position has been eliminated. The pilot program was intended to better coordinate maintenance activities amongst the managing city-owned buildings...
the managing city-owned buildings and has provided to be reasonably successful. The project included establishing one of the three maintenance personnel in a supervisory position. Mr. Schmidt recommended to the committee that the maintenance program be established on a permanent basis, and that the council adopt the building maintenance supervisory position classification, and that Mr. Rick Johnson be appointed to the position of building maintenance supervisor, retroactive to July 1st, 2010. Following discussion was, what, this, a motion was made and seconded to recommend that city council adopt a building maintenance supervisory position classification and appoint Rick Johnson under the proposed terms and conditions. I will move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There is a motion, it's been seconded to appoint Rick Johnson as building maintenance supervisor. Comment? Is this a, just a simple motion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number two is, Mr. Schmidt presented to the committee proposed position, position classification for the planner slash airport manager. Mr. Schmidt explained that following the resignation of the city's full-time airport manager, I believe that was approximately two years ago, the administrative responsibilities were assigned to the assistant city engineer, who has now assumed the acting public works director. Airport administration functions were assigned to city planner Megan Sauer effective February 12th, 2010. Daily routine maintenance responsibilities are provided through the onsite FBO contract, and following completion of airport construction activities, this arrangement has proved to work very well. And Mr. Schmidt was proposing that Megan Sauer, Sauer's position classification be changed to planner slash airport manager. Following discussion, motion made and seconded for the following, that the city council adopt a planner-airport-manager position classification and appoint Megan Sauer under the proposed terms and conditions. I will move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, that the council adopt the planner-airport-manager position, and this be offered to Megan Sauer under the proposed terms and conditions. Comment? Mick?
Mr. Mayor, at the, and members of the council, at the committee meeting, I was asked a question, because we had just completed the discussion of the building maintenance position, and I had recommended that that be effective, retroactive to July. One of the committee members asked, what about this situation? And quite frankly, I didn't have a good answer, and so I said, well, immediately. But reflecting on that, that discussion, I noted in the minutes, I did not know the exact date at the committee meeting, that Ms. Sauer had assumed those responsibilities back in February. Now, and I understand that there was probably more of a transition for this position involving a lot of other people until the dust cleared, but I would ask the council to consider, at a minimum, that this promotion also be retroactive to July 1.
Can we add that to the motion?
I will add that to motion. I think that's fair for the employees, and I'm glad you thought of that. We don't want to have differences between the two employees as taking on their responsibilities. I agree with that, and I will move that in my motion, Mr. Mayor.
And who seconded that?
I did.
And you agree with that?
That's fine.
Any other comment about that? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item number three was, Mr. Schmidt presented to committee a consolidation concept whereby the county would assume responsibilities for city assessing functions. The concept was developed as a result of working with the county over the past several months. Essentially, a proposed consolidation would be modeled after a buyout similar to that which took place with the dispatch center a number of years ago. Four assessing employees' positions would be transferred to the county, granted credit for existing years of service, and placed on the county pay schedule at levels comparable to existing city employee salaries. Initially, annual, annually budget amounts for the assessing department would be transferred to the county and reduced by an agreed-upon amount each year thereafter until calendar year 2018, when payments would cease and the total cost of assessing will be absorbed by the county. All assessing functions, computer equipment, files, and appropriate and determined necessary for continued assessing services and, and to accommodate the consolidation would be transferred to the county. Details regarding vacation and sick leave benefits and allowable transfers would be determined in the adoption of any formal agreement. It is the opinion of the city and the county administration that such a consolidation of services will prove to enhance countywide programs, eliminate duplication government services and related costs, and result in considerable savings over time. The target date for program implementation will be July 1st, 2011. Motion was made and seconded for the following recommendation, and that would be that the council support the concept of consolidation of city and county assessing departments, and that the city administrator be directed to negotiate a formal agreement to be brought back to the council for review and consideration. And I will move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to support the concept of consolidation of city and county assessing departments, and that the city administrator be directed to negotiate a formal agreement to be brought back to the council for review and consideration. Councilmember Reese?
Just a clarification for me. It says that reduced by a, agreed-upon amount each year thereafter until calendar year 2018. Is that beginning or end of calendar year 218? Is that the end of the year? Is that what that's saying?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, but under this concept, which was modeled after the buyout of the dispatch center, where there were annual decreases of twelve and a half percent. In this particular case, the last payment to the county would be made in 2017.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That answers my question.
Mick, I had a question. After July 1st, 2011, where would the employees be based out of?
They would be officed in the county building on Benson Avenue at the intersection of Fourth Street.
There's enough room over there to add three or four more employees?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wouldn't it be wise for us to see what these considerable savings over time will be stated here? I mean, we haven't talked about any money. I mean, it says savings and up to the year 2018, but what are we talking? If we're just shifting employees and the cost to the taxpayer is the same, what are we gaining, or what, what are they gaining? I understand the consolidation of, bringing the two together, because all the records would be in one spot, and you'd think it would be, definitely save some money, but do we have an idea? Is there somebody that's done some homework on this and can share it with us before we send you to do a, to negotiate a formal agreement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, of course, it's, it's difficult at this point to project exactly what would be saved in terms of office efficiencies, purchasing office products, those kinds of things. From the city's perspective, we're talking about three hundred and some thousand dollars a year. That's what our assessing budget is today. I believe in 11, I could look it up quickly, it's in the neighborhood of $305,000. We would send that amount, or something a little less, to the county in 11, and then that amount would be reduced until this seven-year program plays out. At that point, seven years from now, with inflationary increases, the assessing budget might be somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $400,000. That's what the city of Wilmer will save annually, every year. Now, from the county's perspective, they're picking up these additional costs. But you have to remember that the city of Wilmer represents approximately forty percent of that county budget. And so we continue in one form or fashion, you know, to pay for those county services, but it's a direct savings on our city's general fund operating budget of somewhere in the neighborhood, $350,000 a year.
Okay, I follow that, and I have to believe the technology is going to play some kind of part in here also in making that department run more efficient. I mean, I mean, we just started years ago with the computerization of it, and all the information should be on there within, I don't know, 2013, 15, you name it, but that should lead to maybe decreasing the number of people working that department at the county also.
One would theorize that would be the case. As technology opportunities improve, that could very well happen. In fact, we're, we would be taking with us, to the county, a system that is somewhat more advanced than what the county has in place. The idea, of course, is that over time, these two systems will become one, a little more sophisticated, a little more technical, and thereby being more efficient and effective, and maybe requiring less personnel.
Okay.
Any other comments?
One thing, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Also during this whole discussion, the committee talked about the effect on the employees, and as employers, you know, we are concerned about that. And I think Mick has been taking that into consideration, along with the county too, that the, we're trying to minimize the impact to the individuals who have dedicated their time and talents to the assessing department. And I hope that during the process of negotiations and we're to come to a favorable outcomes, that we're not going to be slighting any of our workers, employees. And I, I feel very confident that we're going to try to do that in the nicest and nicest way possible, and hopefully it'll, it'll turn out to be a benefit for people and not too much of a hindrance, because there is change coming. But I also want to comment that the council during our retreats have always talked about working with other intergovernment bodies, and in this case, it shows complete collaboration. And if we can make this work, best of luck, Mick, on negotiation process. And thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I didn't take this task lightly. I've personally worked with some of these individuals for twenty and twenty, and thirty At times, it was, it was difficult to, to even talk to them about it because of our long relationship and the long history that they've had with the city, and they've done a wonderful job over that time. I mean, I've, I can't, I can't even think of a, a problem or an issue I had with any of those folks down in the assessing office. They're great people. So, both Larry and I have gone always the extra mile to make sure that our folks are treated fairly. That, someone used the phrase at the committee meeting the other day about wounded soldiers, and, and we don't want that. We want to, as best we can, develop a seamless transition where we utilize and maximize the talents of our employees, both with the city and the county. The county's impacted as well. So we've been very sensitive to that, and if I didn't think that was going to be the case, I would not have brought it to this point.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, the motion's on the table. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Councilmember Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a fun request, and that would be bringing back to the council this consolidation of the two. Mick, could you give us a chart of payments that the city would be making? You said it's going to be dropping year per year. Give us the information, the financial aspect of it, if you would.
All of those details will be covered in any agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Amen?
Item number four, I closed, announced the intent of the committee to close the meeting to discuss employment contract negotiations, and we moved to close the meeting, and, which carried, and at 5:39 PM, reopened up the meeting, and there is a motion to adjourn. There be no further business. We closed the meeting, and I'll move to file a minutes unless there are any questions.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 12 on the agenda is a discussion among the council members about the process to fill the city administrator's position. I'd like to just comment before I turn it over to the council members that, for the citizens of the, of Wilmer, that the city council had a work session to discuss this matter. A work session is when all council members are invited to come together to discuss a needed topic. No decisions are made at that meeting, but a thorough discussion does take place, and then any pending decisions that should be made are brought to the city council meeting, such as tonight, to then take any action. At the council meeting, seven of the eight elected council members were present, plus myself, and Mr. Schmidt, and a few members from the general public, and we talked about the options that are available now that Mr. Schmidt has announced his intent to retire approximately a year from now. The options included doing nothing, which council members felt was not an option. It also included the idea of hiring a professional firm to assist with the recruitment of candidates for this position, and the screening of candidates, and then the option of perhaps the city council themselves doing the recruitment of a candidate for this position. And at that point, the council drew together and, and had a consensus, and I'll let them speak about that tonight. So at this point, I'll turn it over to council members for their comment about this. Councilmember Reese, would you like to perhaps begin this?
Well, I think that the council needs to go outside of, of our own operations and hire an outside firm, as you mentioned, to search for a city administrator. Now, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't be looking at even internal changes in administration or in not looking for local people to be recruited. These search firms would be advertising and making connections and finding people that have the capabilities to fill the position. And I feel that disconnecting it from the council and having the outside firm doing this work is the only way, and the best way, for this to be, this task to be completed. As we had discussed, the possibility of, of RFPs, requests for proposals. I believe we had discussed two, two, I say local, they're Minnesota firms. There may be others, but I would, I would make the motion that we submit for requests for proposals for these search firms to fill the city administrator position.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, to hire a professional firm to assist in the search for a city administrator. the search for a city administrator. Further comment and question? Councilmember Christiansen and Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we looked for a police chief here not too long ago, we hired from within and we found out that there was three applicants for that particular job. And I don't believe we went outside at all, did we?
No.
Wouldn't be prudent for us to do the same, to see if there's people among us or in staff presently that are interested and consider them before we hire an outside consultant. If it's somebody we'd be really comfortable with, maybe he or she would make that top list the five that would be presented to us. I personally think that's the route. We should go prior to getting an outside entity to do a search for us. That's my personal feeling.
Can I respond to that? I'll have Mr. Reese respond, and I'll call on Mr. Amen.
I, you know, I think even going to the search firms, as far as finding somebody within, I think that can easily happen. And I think that, you know, you take a look at what the hospital did, they did the same thing. They used an outside search firm. And it came down to two local people, and one of them that was inside the organization I think getting it out of the council's hands, and, well, I shouldn't say out of the council's hands, because we will do the hire anyway, because the city administrator works as an employee at will for the city council. But the decisions and the recommendations, I think, need to come from somewhere outside. And I really think that it's a smart investment for us to hire the firm. You know, some of the discussion that we had, how many years have you been with the city, Mick?
With the city?
Yeah, I mean, you've been city administrator ever since we created the position. Is that, what, is that 19 years?
20 years.
20 years as city administrator. So let's just take 20 years, and we're talking an investment of, the range that was given by one of the search groups was $15,000 to $20,000. We could be making a 20-year investment, and that's $1,000 a year. I just think it's a wise move. And yes, it could come from inside.
Councilmember Amen.
Well, just some of the same comments that Councilman Reese and Councilman Christiansen brought up. I agree with, first of all, when you're conducting or running a business, you try to promote within, because you know the personalities, you know the individuals you work with. And I think it was discussed in our meeting, Mayor, that you said that nobody's talked to you or approached you about the city administrator's position, or nobody has asked or inquired about it. But normally, isn't it posted? Is that correct, a job position? Or what's the formal process if, in the case of the city police chief's position, was that just announced? Or was it posted? Or do we have to go through a process like that, or should we? I don't want to slight any employee that has the ability or has the interest in this job that's been here. And if there's that type of individual around who's interested, I'd like to give them that opportunity. And I think that's only prudent that we do that. That's my first concern. And also, I do agree with the requirements that we went through, Mr. Schmidt, with our police chief's choice, that we went through due process and made sure we had a candidate that was capable of performing the job and had all that information. So I'm just wondering if somehow during this process, we maybe shouldn't slow it back and maybe post it for a couple of weeks to see if anybody is interested. And then if not, then we'll move ahead with this program. I know we're underneath a tight timeframe when we discussed it at the meeting, but I'm just, I'd just like to show appreciation to any employee that might be interested and give them that opportunity in a two-week timeframe to make up their mind if they're interested, if anybody's interested in the position or not.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a big decision for us, the selection of the administrator. I think going with a search firm, you add some professionalism and you add some distance. The professionalism will come in when they sit down with us and they say, this is how you do it, you know, these are the things we have to talk about and help us get going in the right direction. And I'm sure that these places well have had the same sort of concerns that we have, that we want to make sure that internal candidates receive due consideration, you know, and perhaps all of them, you know, get the final interview or something. But I'm sure they've encountered that before. But when you go with a professional firm, you cast a broad net. And we would likely see candidates from, I don't know how far afield they'd come, but it would be people with different perspectives and different experiences. And I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to look near and far and select the best candidate. And I think that we can only do that by using a professional organization.
Councilmember DeBleek, then Dockett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess some comments have already been said, but the motion is to RFP to request firms that are going to be, would be interested in doing the search for us. But also, you know, the selection of the city administrator is, you know, one of the major things the council does. He's the only employee of the city that works at will for the council. And I think it's a very important decision we have to make. And the individual that is ultimately selected is going to be a major influence in the community here. So I think we need to look across that, you know, as Councilmember Anderson cast that wide net, and also look at internal candidates as well, and make the best selection possible for this position. I guess I would agree with the motion that we proceed with the RFPs.
Councilmember Dockett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Christiansen, and I think Councilmember Amen was also alluding to it. At that work session, my recommendation was that we take, we have 11 months, whatever that time is. I can't imagine that we cannot take a couple of weeks out or three weeks out to search locally. I'm confident that we have someone locally that could do the job. I'm not sure why we would want to spend $15,000 or $20,000 or more to do this. And I just, I think it would be more prudent to take two or three weeks or a month to look internally. And if that person applies and meets the council's criteria, I think that's what we need to do.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit torn as to which way to go, but it is a very major decision. And at this point, I think a request for proposals doesn't really lock us in, but gives us a better look at what they think they, you know, whoever would submit those proposals, which are professionals in this area, they have access to candidates of interest, notify them. And I think it opens up and gives us a better perspective and will draw in top people for the position. And I think just to look at a request for proposal might be a good idea at this point. I don't see any point in going that, in taking a look at those, and we can decide then if we want to go that route or stay local, or in the meantime, do some looking at the local personnel. But I do think that proceeding with the request for proposals is probably a good idea at this time. Doesn't eliminate any local candidates of merit, obviously. And position, I think, by law has to be posted anyways, doesn't it, Mick?
Well.
Unless we made a promotion without, but I mean...
Typically, we post positions. There are policies and contract documents regarding the hiring process. And we haven't hired a city administrator now for 20 years, so that's a little more vague. But Mr. DeBleek makes a good point. There's a clear difference in hiring processes here. The city administrator hires people all the time. And the process of replacing a police chief or a public works director or finance director or city clerk really is determined by a number of things, requiring the council's involvement only at the time of ratification on a department director position. And Mr. Johnson is right, we're not incurring any class by seeking proposals up to the point you actually would hire a firm. And then in the meantime, I would suggest that the councilmembers go back and read the workforce planning document that I prepared and provided to the councilmembers back in July when I made my announcement. Because in there, it kind of, you know, I'm not the only cowboy leaving town in the very near future. And so you need to keep all of that in perspective, too.
Whoever made their comments? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Johnson spoke to the issue well, and I have to tend to agree that if we request these proposals, that isn't binding us until we decide to hire one or none. Some of my feelings come from, and maybe Mr. Ammon's from, we're in the business of hiring people, too, and I don't know how many in the council had to hire people over 30 years. But I like to think that I know, after speaking to somebody, that I know them quite well. And so that's kind of where I come from. But I can see the RFPs coming, too.
My own comment is that if we were to rely on just seeking internal candidates, that puts the entire responsibility on the city council for recruiting, marketing, verifying resumes, et cetera. If we hire a outside professional firm, they take over all of that responsibility for marketing and recruiting and screening. And they usually also offer certain types of guarantees that if a candidate doesn't work out within a year, they will do it again. I think the public might look more favorably on our city using a professional firm just for the confidence that that might give to the citizens of Wilmer. It does not in any way preclude any candidate from applying, whether they're currently on staff or in the city or in the county, or who know the city and wish to apply. It just puts the responsibility into the professional hands of people who do this on a constant basis. And takes it out of the hands of the city council, who very seldom, as you've heard, do this kind of work over the, and have not done it for over 20 years. All right, the motion is on the table. It's been seconded. The motion is to hire a professional firm to assist in the search for a city administrator. And I think that includes asking for RFPs, request for proposals. Is that part of your...
The motion was to solicit for requests for proposals.
All right.
Only.
And that was seconded?
Yes.
Ron?
Just request for proposals only. It wasn't to hire a firm.
No.
Just RFPs.
Right. Is that what you're saying, Doug?
Yes. That was the motion.
All right. Any final comments?
Councilmember Dockett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the cost for preparing the RFP, that's going to be done internally? Yes. Okay.
Anyone else? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Next on the agenda is number 13, the consideration of the Wilmer City Charter Review. Kevin, do you want to help us with that?
Mayor, hi to you, members of the council. On July 19th, subsequent to a report from the chairman of the Charter Commission, Mr. Bob Bonowitz, you ordered a further review of the Wilmer City Charter by the League of Minnesota City's Charter Review Attorney, Rachel Carlson. She has conducted her report, and you have that enclosed in your packet. Upon studying that, you can see that it's rather technical aspects on a variety of categories, and it's simply staff's recommendation that that task would be best to be analyzed by the Charter Commission, and that the recommendation is to refer that back to the Charter Commission for their continued review. It's also an opportunity to take some action on what was presented to you seven weeks ago, on those various amendments that were processed over those 16, 17 months by the City Charter Commission. I don't know what type of time you spent reading that. I know there's a lot of complicated issues and a lot of work put into them by the Charter Commission. But if you find yourself in a position that you agree with their action, then we need to take another step to get those amendments in ordinance form, hold a hearing, and take action. Should that not be the case, then there's an option here to, as an informal process, make a statement or two on what you don't find acceptable and ask them to reconsider them. I guess there's even a fourth option, if you want to continue some of the work on the previous work of the commission, is ask for a work session, which I'm sure they'd be willing to do, and sit down face to face and work on some details. So the immediate action, Mr. Mayor, is to deal with the review from the League of Minnesota City's staff attorney, and that at least should be turned back to the Charter Commission.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilmembers? Councilmember Reese?
Mr. Mayor, as I read the review from Rachel Carlson, like Kevin says, it's very in-depth and detailed and more than what we as the council would be able to just take action on. And we do have a Charter Commission. I think it is appropriate that it goes back to the Charter Commission for their review and for comment. And I would so move.
Second. There's a motion, and it's been seconded to refer this report from Rachel Carlson back to the Charter Commission for their continued review. Councilmember Amen.
Question, is this an appropriate time to give direction individually as to some of the items that they've discussed? Or should we bring this up at another time?
I think now's the time. I mean, it's, we don't want any surprises, and so if we have comments, we should make them.
Well, the gender language, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, the gender information, a lot of things are brought up by the League of Minnesota City's attorney, of course, don't make complete sense, maybe, because I'd have to read them three or four times. Maybe Rich, Ron, you can read them once and understand them. For me, it takes a few times, Rich. I understand the general direction they're going, and I agree with the Charter Commission reviewing these issues. But one thing that I do have very adamly opposed is the change in the municipal utilities and the right of the council to oversee and have veto power. And I do not agree with that, and I thought I'd say it publicly before anybody calls me. And I just wanted to get that out. Otherwise, I think all the other items, or majority of the other items, can be discussed rationally and approved. of the other items can be, can be discussed rationally, and approved.
Any other comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Well, I, too, would like the Charter Commission to reconsider and think about that, that section having to do with the utilities. I, I don't think there's much of an appetite on the part of the council to go along with that, and perhaps there can be something more amenable than, than what, than what it is now, so, I agree, it's not something that, that I'm in favor of.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My suggestion would be to not send the packet to us all in one chunk, you know, give us, give us a few that we know will pass the test to the council, but some of those that maybe are a little more contentious, you know, hold off on them, but I don't like receiving this thing in one packet, as we did, from the Charter Commission, you either pass it all or none, that's what I understood it to be, and I don't think that's appropriate. I'd rather receive it in bits and pieces, and do them one at a time, and some of them won't require any discussion, because they're, they'd be pretty simple. But I would request that they bring them to us, little at a time.
Councilmember DeBleek?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would agree with the recommendation that we refer this back to the Charter Commission to continue their review, along with the comments of the League of Cities, League of Cities Attorney here. I think she has a lot of good comments, as far as what should be done, what should be changed, and also, I'd like to reiterate the fact that the, the issue with municipal utilities, I disagree with 100 percent, I think we, the council needs to maintain its authority over that commission with the veto power, and I do not believe that we should be giving that, giving that power up. And the other aspect here, I think the Charter Commission should work on this, and bring it back to us as a whole package, I think it would read better as a package, rather than just piecemealing it back to us, as paragraph here and a paragraph there is a change, I think the whole package would read better, and be able to put it more together as a, as a completed charter, so.
Somebody else want to make a comment? Councilmember Reese?
As long as everybody else is weighed in on the MUC, I will, too. You know, we've, we've got two candidates, the hospital and the MUC, that come under the authority of the city council, and I'm not sure what the difference is between the two, that the Charter Commission would say that we should relinquish the veto power over the MUC, and not the hospital. I would not be in favor of relinquishing that veto power over either, simply because we are the representatives of taxpayers, and the residents within the city of Wilmer, and who is ultimately responsible for the MUC and the hospital? But the taxpayer. I'm just, I'm not going to give it up. I won't vote for that.
Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any timelines or benchmarks that we need to meet to have this completed by? And also, I agree that I would much rather see it come to us by the sections, and approve those sections, I think it makes more sense.
Does anybody else want to make a comment on anything?
One other comment, I asked a question.
Member Amon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the question of forfeiture of office on the 98 period, I think the attorney from the league kind of defines it a little better, or brings a suspicion to what some of my concerns were, too, is to, if it was illness, or whatever, that the person is able to abandon their office, or terminate their residency in the, in the area of the Wilmer, due to health, if that should happen, and I think we made a wise choice by having the League of Minnesota Cities Attorney review this. There's some things in here tonight we could go through, and approve, to make progress, that are, that are very, very small, but I think most of them, the Charter Commission has done a very good job on detailing all the little points. I think, first of all, I would like, or second of all, I'd also like to find out if the Charter Commission has had a meeting with this information we received. Have they, they have not had a meeting since they presented this changes to the council, correct?
That is correct, they have not had a meeting, and our conversations today with the chairman, we are going to solicit some input from a professor on the team, to find out what his schedule frees up, and then begin to plan something in the mid twenties of September, and then go right back to every two weeks' meetings. Thank you.
The councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and this, this whole issue of how we, how we receive it, and how we vote on it, I think we're all looking for the same thing, and, and I think we could, we can certainly get the whole document, but perhaps we're going to vote on sections 1, 2, and 3 at one point in time, and then some other sections at a later point in time, because I certainly would not be in favor of trying to discuss and dissect the whole thing in one setting, so, I think we can, we can get that to work out to everybody's satisfaction.
Any other comments here? I had a question, has our city attorney seen the report from Rachel Carlson?
Yes, I have, but I haven't gone through it completely in detail. She makes reference to various statutes, court decisions, and so forth, all of which will have to be pulled out and reviewed to fully understand the comments she's making, where she's making those citations, so, but I have looked at it in general, and, for example, on the part with the vacation easements, I've already talked to Jeff Kimpeling on that, and we're working on redoing that, to make it a little clearer, it was clear to him, and it was clear to me, but maybe we were too close to the forest to see the trees, so, obviously, it wasn't clear to her, we need to put some definitions in there, and that's one example that we've already started working on.
And you're likely to be called back into the Charter Committee, I'm sure, Rich, right?
Correct.
To clarify and give your opinion about this stuff?
I would imagine so, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one other issue that struck my eye was on the initiative, or the initiative measure, and 7.04, the referendum measure, I, I definitely would feel more comfortable if Mr. Ron had reviewed that. With all the current caseloads here, I think it would require a lot of investigation work, or research, that I would entrust to him, and I'd value his opinion very much.
Any other comments from the council members? All right, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded, to refer this back to the Charter Commission for their continued review, and these, Kevin, you'll take note of comments made here tonight?
I will share them.
With the Charter Commission. All right, those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I have a question for our city administrator, or for Kevin. Quite a while ago, the city council on the Charter Commission submitted names to be given to the district court, has the judge of district court made his decision about fulfilling the empty position on the Charter Commission?
Yes, sir, Mr. Joe Thompson was appointed.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. I'd like to thank Mr. Thompson, he's one of our retired attorneys in town, our semi-retired attorney, for his willingness to serve on that committee. We're on number 14 on the agenda, which is the consideration of on-sale liquor, and on-sale Sunday Liquor licenses, Applebee's. Kevin, can you explain that?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council, we currently have Applebee's licensed under Applebee's Restaurant North Limited Liability Company. They sold the establishment to Apple Minnesota Limited Liability Company, and we are simply splitting the year, rebating to the original company the remainder of the year upon approval, and then charging the new company the balance of the year to continue services, and nothing will change to the outside citizen, it's just a company change. The city attorney has completed his review of the insurance certificate before this meeting, and it's staff's recommendation that we approve the on-sale liquor license, and the Sunday liquor license for the Apple Minnesota Limited Liability Company.
Thank you, Kevin. Council members?
Move to approve.
Second. There is a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the license pursuant to the city attorney approving the insurance certificate. Any comments from council members? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We're down to Ms. Hulany, Mr. or Councilmember Amon, did you have any more you wanted to say about that FAA letter?
No, I guess I'm, well, yes, Mr. Mayor, caught me off guard here, I thought you were going to take your other issues first. What I was concerned about was the letter from the FAA that expressed some concerns on the current conditions at the airport, and I'm curious if that is an immediate repairs that need to be taken care of, because it's a safety issue, and I'm concerned about that, and, and that's why I was asking Mr. Schmidt if, if you could explain that, the timeframe, you said the estimates are coming, and we would know what might have to be done to move that terminal building out.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the meeting with the FAA was requested by the FAA to visit with the city about the relocation of the RCO equipment from the old airport terminal building, in the basement of the old airport terminal building, to a site on the new airport. Now, we had talked to the FAA quite some time ago about relocating this equipment, but that project never got off the ground, because the FAA was suggesting that it would cost the city $400,000, requiring us to construct a new building at the new airport, and we just didn't really see the, the value of doing something like that, when we had a number of perfectly fine buildings at the new airport that we thought could accommodate this equipment. So, they requested a meeting following some of their technicians' visits to the existing site, a routine maintenance kind of trip. The way it was presented to us initially, I wasn't sure what kind of building, or what building they were talking about, but they were suggesting to us there was water on the floor, and, and mold, and it was a dangerous situation, and in the words of the FAA official, they told their technicians to stand down. So naturally, I was concerned about it, and I went out, I went into the building, into the basement, and I, I did see some evidence of puddle of water in one corner, and it was damp and moldy, but, I mean, the building's been unoccupied, with the exception of storage by Berg Fabricating, for a number of years now, so it wasn't probably unexpected. So that led, then, to that letter, which was a summary of our meeting, and talked about the plan of action that we worked out with the FAA to facilitate the relocation of the RCO, and then went on to explain their concerns about the building condition, which of course is all tied to the issues that we've been having with them for quite some time now, on the building reuse, and the subsequent land release. And we're very much aware that there, that these conditions exist, although I'm not so sure it's as bad as, as they made it out to be. What is undisputable, however, is the general overall condition of the building, in, in terms of what it would take to bring this building up to code, and I'm not talking just about moldy ceilings, I'm talking about the actual structure itself, the type of rough that exists, and so now we are, are working with some folks who are putting together estimated costs for basic kinds of improvements to the building, and replacement, if needed, and we're trying to work through a contractor to line up an assessment of the mold issue. And all of these will be formulated, put together into a report to the, the city council, to the FAA. We talked to them, of course, about appealing the decision on the historical significance, which is having a huge impact on our ability to, to do anything with the building, and we're working with the state Historic Preservation Office as well, on the historical significant designation, so, you know, hopefully, we can wrap all of these up, including the primary objective of that meeting, and that was to relocate the RCO.
Thank you for explaining that, appreciate it. Again, my issue was of safety, and they might be over, overdramatizing the situation compared to other facilities, but it is old, and, and it's still working, so, we have no immediate threat with the system failing, not in our eyes.
Well, the RCO is still working.
Working, thank you.
All right, under Ms. Hulany, then, I have a proclamation I'd like to share with the people of Wilmer, and it has to do with one of our local clubs, the Noon Kiwanis Club, and I'd like to first explain that I am a member of this club, and attended on a fairly regular basis, but annually, they have a fundraiser that has become quite successful, and the money is contributed back into the community, and the committee that's working on this has asked that a proclamation be determined to announce and support this effort, and I'm happy to do that. And here's the proclamation. Whereas the Wilmer Noon Kiwanis Club has a long and distinguished record of public service projects dedicated to the welfare of our youth, and whereas the residents of the city of Wilmer have been the beneficiaries of the good work done by the Noon Kiwanis Club, and whereas the Kiwanis Club has, over the years, engaged in fundraising projects as a means of financing its good works, and whereas in 2010, the Kiwanis Club has joined with the Wilmer Library School Homework Program in a fundraising project based upon the distribution of the best peanuts in America, known as Peanuts for Kids. Now, therefore, I, Les Heitke, the elected mayor of the city of Wilmer, by the powers vested in me by virtue of my office, hereby declare and proclaim that the date, September 14th, 2010, shall be the Kiwanis Peanut Day in Wilmer, and I urge all of our citizens of Wilmer to support Kiwanis and the public school, the Public Library School Homework Program in their fundraising endeavor during the month of September. Last year, the Kiwanis Club raised over $11,000 on their peanut day, this year, their goal is to raise closer to about $14,000 or $15,000, and again, all that money goes back into the community, and we urge you to support them, and, and buy some peanuts. I would like to also announce to the council members- I would like to also announce to the council members that we have notice from the League of Minnesota City of their fall regional meetings. These are the meetings that are organized in about 10 different cities throughout the state of Minnesota, nine different cities, that cover the entire state, and speak about current and poignant issues related to cities that they are living through at this time. The subject includes the consolidation of services, not only within cities, but within cities and counties. That certainly is timely, based on our discussion tonight about the assessing department. Responses to the fiscal crisis, what are cities doing to meet the austerity of the state budget and the impact on city budget. City services and funding projects, how do you find funds for special projects, and a legislative update from the state legislature on the major bills that were enacted by this past legislature. These meetings are held through the later month of September and throughout October, and one meeting is held in November. I urge your council members to consider attending one of these meetings. The closest one is in Walnut Grove, I'm sorry, the closest one is in Grove City, which is just on Highway 12 on October 14th. If you're interested, please contact Audrey at City Hall to make necessary arrangements. The other thing I'd like to comment on is an event that took place this weekend out at our airport. It was called Aviation Day, and it was sponsored and promoted by the Airport Commission, that is appointed by the city council for the city of Wilmer, and by the EAA, the Experimental Aircraft Association. There was also a large number of participating businesses who contributed to the success of this event. There was a static display of airplanes. There are many special features out there. The helicopter came in from the metro area, the medical helicopter. A homemade airplane was on display that had been built by Dr. John Lamming, who's a member of the Airport Commission. The day was dedicated to Gene Underland, who was a long-term experimental aircraft associate who unfortunately died about a year ago, but the day was dedicated to him. And one of the more interesting features at the Aviation Day was the presence of a car plane. This is a plane, it's called a Maverick. It's built by a company down in Florida, and one of the company leaders literally drove and flew this car plane up here to Wilmer to attend a wedding. And he was in the area, and he was leaving the day after this Aviation Day at the airport, so he brought it out to the airport. It's a small vehicle that has an 89 horsepower engine on it, Subaru engine, that you can literally drive down the highway. It's a four-passenger, and by the flip of a switch, there's a propeller on the back that kicks in, and with the use of a parachute, the thing becomes airborne. And it was a very interesting piece of equipment. It's available, if you'd like to purchase it, it only will cost just $79,000 for this gem of an airplane. The other interesting part is that the profits from this company go to support ministries in third-world countries, where they give these airplanes to indigenous people so that they can fly into the hinterlands and the outbacks of very poor regions of Africa and India and other places, so that they can transport doctors and dentists and nurses to these far-reaching places to provide needed medical and dental services. I want to thank the Airport Commission members, and especially their chairperson, Pat Curry, who did outstanding work in organizing this event. There were well over 1,000 people out there, and I hope it's an annual event. The Airport Commission is certainly to be commended for their participation, and those members are Pat Curry, Jeff Newton, Terry Elbers, Dan Rigstad, Steve, Dr. Steve Nedrolow, Dr. John Lamming, and Sandy Gardner. Thanks to all of them, and the volunteers, and the businesses that helped to support Aviation Day at the Wilmer Airport this past weekend. That, now we go to the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Finance will meet Monday, the 13th, at 4:45.
September 13th, 4:45, Finance Committee. Public Works, Public Safety?
We will be meeting September 14th, that's Tuesday, 4:45, and we will be meeting at the New Wastewater Treatment Facility in the Administration Building.
September 14th, Tuesday, at 4:45, at the New Wastewater Treatment Plant Administrative Building.
And you should come in on the brushside road.
Come in from the south side, from the brushside of the, yes. Okay, thank you. Community Development?
Community Development will meet September 16th, 4:45, that is a Thursday.
Community Development, September 16th, 4:45. Labor?
No meeting.
Are there any other meetings from city staff to be announced? All right, if not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been a motion, and it's been seconded, we are adjourned.